Good morning. Thank you. We have a quorum. I want to ask all guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail and we will get started. And I also would like to ask anyone, if anyone has a cellphone or any other electronic device that makes any noise, if you can please turn it off or turn it on silent. Thank you for your cooperation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Jay Brodnax of Mount Pisgah AME Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. I would ask all guests and members and visitors, please rise. Pastor.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, we the servant leaders of your people of Philadelphia have come today to give thanks for another opportunity to serve. We're grateful that by your sovereign will, you have divinely positioned us to make a difference. We have come today to deliberate, to consider testimony and to render decisions on the issues for your people that have elected us to represent them or to testify about in this session. Our God, this is a sacred responsibility for whom much is given, much is required. Much is required today because our schools, whilst able to function, are still too underfunded to improve to the level that the next generation is worthy of. Much is required today because there are still too many who are unable to survive on the wages that they earn or are unable to secure wages at all. Much is required today because there are still populations in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection who are made to feel that their lives don't matter and don't feel secure in their own neighborhoods. But we thank you today that although much is required, much is possible. Much is possible if we seek you first and place the needs of your people above parochial agendas and partisan loyalties. Yes, Lord, much is possible if we remember that if you are for us, who can be against us? Much is possible if we remember that if we stand together, if our hearts are together, if our minds are together, all things can be accomplished. Much is possible because you have divinely and uniquely gifted every somebody in this room to contribute to the making of a great Philadelphia. Much is possible because even though the times are advancing quickly, some folks on the main line teach us that last-second shots do go in. So we thank you today for the privilege and the opportunity, and we believe today that we can make a difference, so we thank you for the opportunity. In your mighty name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor for those very inspiring words. Appreciate it. Counselors be at ease. Thank you all very much. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 31st, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 31st, 2016 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and promptly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, March 31st, 2016. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome everyone who has come down today. Taking time out of your busy day is very important to us. We really appreciate the fact that you've come down. We hope that your stay here is a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you. We look forward to your continued support. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O., who presented a resolution recognizing the 2015 winners of Phil Live Center Stage with Kelly Lee and those accompanying her. Please join the Councilman at the podium.
All right. Thank you very much, Council President. We are very pleased to have the winners of PHL Live Center Stage joining us today, and of course, this whole process could not occur without our music greats from Philadelphia, many of whom are here today, and I'd ask them to come up to stand behind me. That would be some of our Grammy Award winners, Grammy-nominated engineers, music promoters and performers. David Ivory, Kalandra Rice Prince, Craig White, Charlie Bartlett, Thomas Camarda, Brian Cronin, Carvin Hagens, Lovett Hines, E. Daniels, Tommy Joyner, Chil Moody, DJ Casper, Rashawn Lucas, Kyle Riddick, Simply Monica, Jennifer Logue, and our wonderful interns Brittany Baxter, Georges Zetas, Matthew Contreras, and Rashawn Christopher. Would you all please come up? Thank you. It's a big group, I know.
And also joining Councilman O., we have Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Thoben Burger, and Councilwoman Bass.
All right. Fantastic. So our innovative council members...
Councilman, hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna make arrangements to get everybody up here. Quite a crowd.
Randall Jefferson, forgot to mention. I see some new faces I should have mentioned. So the creative economy is so integral to Philadelphia's future, the innovative economy, and one of the things we've done is create PHL Live Center Stage where anyone for free can submit a video themselves performing in 10 musical categories, and they are judged by some of the people up here who volunteer their time and their expertise, and the winners are selected by them. Five finalists who perform live at some of Philadelphia's great venues that are also donated. All this to really uplift the creative economy in Philadelphia. They win $1,000 and free studio recording time and many other prizes. We try to build that up. There's no tax dollars involved in any of this. This is all volunteer and contribution. And so, we have with us many of the winners of PHL Live Center Stage, and so with that, let me say that this is a resolution recognizing and honoring the 2015 winners of PHL Live Center Stage.
Whereas Philly Live Center Stage is a music initiative established by Councilman David O. as Chairman of the Committee on Global Opportunities and Creative Innovative Economy. And whereas Philly Live Center Stage provides local musicians with exciting opportunities to be discovered, to be promoted, to be elevated, to be celebrated, and to achieve success here in Philadelphia, thanks to Councilman O. Whereas Philly Live Center Stage performances and award show is structured across 10 different genres of music, bringing diverse musicians together. The 10 different genres are rock, hip-hop, jazz, my favorite, classical, gospel, country folk, world, pop, rhythm and blues, and DJ. In addition, a People's Choice Award is selected in the 11th category, and... Whereas the finalists perform live in prominent local venues: Royal Cafe Live, Milk Boy, Hard Rock Cafe, Underground Arts, Reformation Lutheran Church, The Clef Club, Warm Daddies, The Curtis Institute of Music, Voltage and Fire and Ice, and whereas the final winners for each genre are decided at the second PHL Live Center Stage Award Show by judges who are considered experts in the industry in December at the Trocadero. And whereas the People's Choice Award is voted on by the audience before and during the award show at the Trocadero Theater. Whereas the winning artists from each genre receive top prizes such as having a single recording on the PHL Live Center Stage compilation album, $1,000 cash, studio recording time, valuable, music videos, documentaries, and opening at major concerts. And whereas the 2015 winner of the rock category is American Dinosaur. And whereas the 2015 winner of the hip-hop category is Caesar. And whereas the 2015 winner of the jazz category is Bryant Jordan. And whereas the 2015 winner of the classical category is Garrick V. Morgan. And whereas the 2015 winner of the gospel category is Dave Bach, and...
Whereas the 2015 winner of the country folk category is, their words and their name, The Bastard Sons of Captain May. And whereas the 2015 winner of the world category is Jahah People. Whereas the 2015 winner of the pop category is Natalie Bermuda's. And whereas the 2015 winner of the R&B category is the late artist J., or is the artist J. J. the artist! I have the most difficult part here! Whereas the 2015 winner of the DJ category is DJ Mackie. And whereas the 2015 winner of the People's Choice category is J. The artist therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby recognizes and honors the 2015 winners of PHL Live Center Stage. Let's give them a round of applause.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Lee for remarks.
Yes. So I'll present this to our Chief Cultural Officer, Kelly Lee.
Very nice. All right. We'll be down for a phone line, so the mic is yours.
Ms. Lee, remarks please.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you to Councilman O. and all of City Council for this honor. As the Chief Cultural Officer for the City of Philadelphia, it is a pleasure to accept this award on behalf of the Office of Arts, Culture, and the Creative Economy. The Office has been a proud sponsor of PHL Live Center Stage since its inception in 2014, and we wish all of the winners continued success in your musical careers. Our mission is to be a promoter and resource for Philadelphia's arts, cultural, creative industries, and communities. And with our own musical initiatives such as Philly Celebrates Jazz, which we kicked off last week in celebration of Jazz Appreciation Month, we are excited to complement our programs with partner initiatives such as PHL Live. Along with the return of PHL Live this fall, I am also very excited to be part of the new Philadelphia Music Industry Commission developed by City Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and Creative Innovative Economy. The Commission will work with the music industry to help support and grow its development and continued success in Philadelphia. I look forward to working with City Council and the Philadelphia Music Industry Commission, and thank you again for this honor.
We have so many outstanding music folks on here, some true icons, some great Grammy Award winners, too many people to come to the microphone, so on behalf of everybody, I've asked one of our rising and prominent Philadelphia musicians to speak on everyone. He's our music ambassador, Chil Moody.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First, I'd just like to say thank you to Councilman David O. and his staff. It's been a pleasure being not only a host but the music ambassador of the PHL Live Center Stage Initiative for the past couple of years. Looking forward to what we have coming up in these, you know, next years with the PHL Live Center Stage Initiative. It's dope what it's doing for our city's creative economy, not just the art, it's not just the music, but our creative economy as a whole. And I'm also looking forward, as you spoke about with the Music Commission that we're doing. I'm honored to be on the nominating committee, nominating committee, excuse me, and forming that committee. It's just a good feeling to know that it seems like everybody's goals are similar in regaining Philly's prestigious place in the music industry. It was a time when we were the number-one place for music, and it's just good knowing that everybody's goals are to reclaim that spot, that prestigious spot. So I'm thank you again and enjoy the rest of your day.
Counselor Beattie.
So I'll ask all of us to come to the front, and we'll stand right in front here.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Green, who presented a resolution honoring Dennis O'Brien. Dennis O'Brien, our God. In recognition of World Autism Awareness Day 2016, with our good friend and colleague, Dennis O'Brien, please join the Councilman at the podium along with Councilmember Greenlee. And also Councilman Don, Councilwoman Gimm, and Councilman Thoben Burger. And Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning.
Ready, sir?
Good morning. It's not always we have an opportunity to recognize one of our former colleagues for all the work that they've done. I know for me and my family and for all the families dealing with the learning difference and physical difference of autism, I just want to thank Councilman Dennis O'Brien for his work in reference to the autism issue and helping families, not just in the City of Philadelphia, but throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And so, as you know from my comments last week, April's Autism Awareness Month, so in honor of Autism Awareness Month, we're presenting today's resolution honoring the many contributions Dennis O'Brien has a champion of the autism community. Whereas April 2nd is World Autism Awareness Day, and whereas autism, also known as autism spectrum disorder, describes a complex neurological disorder that affects in varying degrees language and social skill development characterized by challenges in communication and social interactions, repetitive behaviors, and movement, and...
Whereas for more than 30 years as a state representative, including as the first-ever minority party Speaker of the House, and as a councilman in this body, Dennis O'Brien worked to support and advocate for those with disabilities, particularly people with autism, and...
Whereas as a state representative, he was a leader in crafting the state's 1998 multi-billion dollar settlement with tobacco companies that still provides funding for public health initiatives in Pennsylvania, and in securing more state aid for children and adults with disabilities, including autism, and...
Whereas then-Speaker O'Brien championed the state's first-ever autism insurance legislation, which included the autism spectrum disorders, coverage provisions, and Pennsylvania's insurance law requiring private insurers to provide coverage with essential treatments for individuals with autism, such as applied behavior analysis, ABA, and other structural behavioral programs, and...
Whereas in 2013, he worked with the Philadelphia Phillies to make Citizens Bank Park the nation's first autism-friendly ballpark. And whereas in 2014, then-Councilman O'Brien helped initiate the first municipal-driven response to a disease melee in the history of the United States with the launch of the Philadelphia Autism Project, which continues to bring city stakeholders together to find better ways to deliver services and improve outcomes for the city's autism community, and whereas...
With the help of 135 experts from all over the world, the first year of the Philadelphia Autism Project generated 119 policy recommendations covering policy, research, health care provision, education, and other issues which are still being implemented, and...
Whereas Dennis O'Brien has continued to contribute to the work of providing appropriate services and adequate funding to services for those who have disabilities and special needs, especially autism. Now therefore be it...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that counsel in recognition of World Autism Awareness Day 2016 thus hereby honor the many contributions of Dennis O'Brien as a champion of the autistic community. Further resolved, that a gross copy of this resolution be presented to Dennis O'Brien evidencing the sheer admiration and respect of this legislative body and families dealing with autism throughout the city.
Chair recognizes Councilman O..
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just overwhelmed, and I've been losing my voice over this week, but I ran into my former colleague, Councilman Greenlee, and I was just observing that perhaps City Council was starting a little later than it did when I was a member, and he said, "That's because we're all huddled in our offices trying to figure out nice things to say about you." But this is the month when we turn all the blue lights on and we start celebrating autism, and I'd like to challenge everyone to think about how we figured this thing out. And I'd like to congratulate our Governor, Tom Wolf, because as we celebrate autism awareness, he is the first governor in the United States that has changed the proclamation from autism awareness to autism acceptance. And he also has put together an advisory group, which I am a member, and for the first time in eight years since we initiated Act 62. On April 15th, the full implementation of Act 62, the Autism Insurance Bill, is going to go live, and it means tens of millions of dollars a year for our adults living with autism in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The charge that I always like to impart to everyone is we should be about making Philadelphia the first autism-friendly city on the planet, and in doing that, we have to recognize a fundamental difference, and that is, we shouldn't focus on trying to make individuals ready for the community. We're the problem, ladies and gentlemen. We're the problem. We have to make the City of Philadelphia ready for individuals with autism. That again indemnifies the word acceptance. We are, while we celebrate awareness, the whole world is looking at Pennsylvania because we're 10 years ahead of everybody else. Now, the whole world is looking at the City of Philadelphia because of the Philadelphia Autism Project. And just one significant first. The Philadelphia Police Department has just reached out to our Eastern Regional Cert, and they are going to train our 6,000 Philadelphia police officers for crisis intervention training, first time ever, ever, on the planet.
I'm so very proud to present this today with my colleagues. All of us know that the work of the Philadelphia Children's Alliance, they have been a strategic partner to not only the government, but really do tremendous work. And over the last couple of years, we were fortunate enough to lead the nation in creating a co-location model to protect our most vulnerable children at most difficult times in their lives. And just to talk about the impact of when government is proactive, we co-locate folks, the kind of activity that the Children's Alliance has created on Hunting Park Avenue, we just opened up a new bus route along Hunting Park Avenue. And one of the reasons is with the location of the Children's Alliance, with ACT that's on Hunting Park Avenue, with our GN Hunting Park Shopping Center, we have now been able to connect the communities of Hunting Park, Feltonville, and Juniata. So this is not only about doing good work, but it's really using city resources in a way that generate economic development and transformation in neighborhoods. And they've been such a great partner and a welcomed partner into the Hunting Park community in their new center, and I'll let them talk a little bit about some of the exciting things that are going on. The model has expanded, we're leading the nation in this, and with our partners at CHOP and St. Christopher's Hospital, the work we're doing there is just amazing and it's incredible. So with that, recognizing and honoring the Philadelphia Children's Alliance for their commitment to promoting healing and justice for victims of child abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring April 2016 to be the Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia. Whereas for the past 20 years, the Philadelphia Children's Alliance has advocated for a team-based approach, build cooperative relationships, introduce efficiencies into a system to provide rapid response, and effectively change how abused children are served and cared for in Philadelphia. And whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance became a full member of the National Children's Alliance in 1992 and was accredited by the NCA in 2001. Today, Philadelphia Children's Alliance not only meets all national children's standards, but is a national best standards model for peer agencies across the country.
Whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance exists to create a more effective and caring response to children who have been sexually abused, and is dedicated to providing justice and healing for sexual abuse children, working to protect victims, ending the cycle of abuse, and improving the quality of abuse investigations. And whereas recently, PCA relocated to the Philadelphia Safety Collaborative within the 7th Councilmanic District, along with the Department of Human Services, the Special Victims Unit, and the District Attorney's Office. With the addition of SEPTA's newest Route 53, this facility not only is more accessible, but it also allows for more streamlined investigations and a less traumatic experience for children. And whereas in 2015, Philadelphia Children's Alliance conducted 2,108 forensic interviews with 2,510 children and caregivers receiving victim advocacy. With the new medical clinic and the passionate and hard work instead at the Philadelphia Children's Alliance, 153 children received mental health therapy on-site, and since opening in December 2015, they have conducted 132 medical screenings, and...
Whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance has partnered with St. Christopher's Hospital and the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, CHOP, so that any child needing medical attention is able to receive the attention and care at the Philadelphia Children's Alliance Medical Clinic five days a week. And whereas April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, I'm sorry, April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and Philadelphia Children's Alliance recognizes this month by promoting increased knowledge of the resources available to parents and caregivers to prevent child maltreatment and promote well-being. And whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance is the only primary intervention organization in Philadelphia working with child victims of sexual abuse, and this mandate to increase capacity is driven by a critical need for PCA's services to help protect the children and families they serve, so that the children can quickly get the help they need to live safe, fulfilling lives, and...
Therefore be it resolved that this Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes, congratulates, honors, and really celebrates the work of the Philadelphia Children's Alliance for their commitment to promoting healing and justice for victims of sexual abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring April 2016 to be the Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia. Whereas for the past 20 years, the Philadelphia Children's Alliance has advocated for a team-based approach, build cooperative relationships, introduce efficiencies into a system to provide rapid response, and effectively change how abused children are served and cared for in Philadelphia. And whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance became a full member of the National Children's Alliance in 1992 and was accredited by the NCA in 2001. Today, Philadelphia Children's Alliance not only meets all national children's standards, but is a national best standards model for peer agencies across the country.
Whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance exists to create a more effective and caring response to children who have been sexually abused, and is dedicated to providing justice and healing for sexual abuse children, working to protect victims, ending the cycle of abuse, and improving the quality of abuse investigations. And whereas recently, PCA relocated to the Philadelphia Safety Collaborative within the 7th Councilmanic District, along with the Department of Human Services, the Special Victims Unit, and the District Attorney's Office. With the addition of SEPTA's newest Route 53, this facility not only is more accessible, but it also allows for more streamlined investigations and a less traumatic experience for children. And whereas in 2015, Philadelphia Children's Alliance conducted 2,108 forensic interviews with 2,510 children and caregivers receiving victim advocacy. With the new medical clinic and the passionate and hard work instead at the Philadelphia Children's Alliance, 153 children received mental health therapy on-site, and since opening in December 2015, they have conducted 132 medical screenings, and...
Whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance has partnered with St. Christopher's Hospital and the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, CHOP, so that any child needing medical attention is able to receive the attention and care at the Philadelphia Children's Alliance Medical Clinic five days a week. And whereas April is Child Abuse Awareness Month, I'm sorry, April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and Philadelphia Children's Alliance recognizes this month by promoting increased knowledge of the resources available to parents and caregivers to prevent child maltreatment and promote well-being. And whereas the Philadelphia Children's Alliance is the only primary intervention organization in Philadelphia working with child victims of sexual abuse, and this mandate to increase capacity is driven by a critical need for PCA's services to help protect the children and families they serve, so that the children can quickly get the help they need to live safe, fulfilling lives, and...
Therefore be it resolved that this Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes, congratulates, honors, and really celebrates the work of the Philadelphia Children's Alliance for their commitment to promoting healing and justice for victims of sexual abuse in Philadelphia, and declaring 2016 to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia. We extend our sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body and thank the organization for their contributions, and obviously, all of the partners, including DHS, the Police Department, and others. And further be resolved that we will provide a copy of this resolution to the Children's Alliance as evidence of our sincere respect and admiration. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Keller for remarks.
Thank you so much to Councilwoman Kiyoona Sanchez for sponsoring this resolution, and to Council for voting to declare April 2016 Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, and to Council President Clark for allowing us to speak today. The Philadelphia Children's Alliance coordinates a multi-agency interdisciplinary response to promote healing and justice for victims of child sexual abuse in Philadelphia. Our approach coordinates the efforts of all agencies that are mandated to investigate, including the Philadelphia Police Department Special Victims Unit, the Department of Human Services, and the District Attorney's Office. In 2015, we conducted 2,108 forensic interviews with victims from all Philadelphia zip codes, and we provided 2,510 children and caregivers with victim advocacy services. We also provide mental health therapy for victims and caregivers, as well as medical screenings through a partnership with the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and St. Christopher's Hospital for Children. Since the medical suite opened just this past December, in December of 2015, we've conducted 132 medical exams. Children come to our facility in Hunting Park to talk about what has happened to them, to be interviewed by experts, to get victim support services, to get therapy, and to begin the process of healing. If we all do our jobs, the abuse will stop and they will be protected. The abuse will not be a life-defining event, but will be something that they will be able to work through with the help of qualified and dedicated professionals. Taking steps to promote child abuse awareness and prevention, City Council is taking a great step in helping us in our mission to bring healing and justice to every victim child, every precious child who is a victim of abuse in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you again for allowing us to speak. We look forward to seeing many of you and your staff members at our Legislative Breakfast and Pinwheel Garden Planting tomorrow. If you have not yet seen our medical suite, it will be a treat for you to see that as part of the tour, and we will have a delicious breakfast, so another incentive for you to come. If you are unable to attend, we're happy to schedule a one-on-one tour of our child-friendly facility to show you the work that we're doing for all victims of child sexual abuse in the city of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Council dites. The next order of business is Communications, and the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on April 5, 2016, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at a session on March 31, 2016. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the new Kensington-Fishtown urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 1507 Frankford Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Brown, sorry, Councilwoman, I forgot.
No problem at all, Mr. President. I'm always excited to introduce tomorrow's leaders, and this morning, we have two St. Joseph University seniors studying political science or majoring in political science. And I'm pleased to introduce Katie McTheeters and Melena Valopas, if you ladies would both stand, so we can say thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That concludes our messages, and the next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, this morning, I introduced two privileged resolutions, both cosponsored by Councilmembers Helen Gimm and Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution proclaiming April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Philadelphia.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Legislative Oversight Committee to conduct public hearings to examine the executive branch's enforcement of Bill Number 100011A, Lead Paint Disclosure.
And that will also be in this week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 31st Street, Master Street, 32nd Street, and Jefferson Street. Further, to approve the master plan for the Brewery Town Residential Mixed-Use District by adding the site bounded by 31st Street, Master Street, 32nd Street, and Jefferson Street.
Bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's convey conditional fees, simple title, society on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements around situated in the 28th Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I have five bills and one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Section 14905 entitled Non-Accessory Signs by adding a new subsection to permit one advertising sign with certain conditions within the area bounded by McGee Avenue, the Delaware River, Unruh Avenue, and New State Road. And an ordinance prohibiting tractor-trailer traffic on the 2,800 block of Orthodox Street and the 2,800 block of Headley Street from Richmond Street to Bass Street with certain exceptions. And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate buffered bicycle lanes in each direction on Tyson Avenue from Roosevelt Boulevard to Frankford Avenue. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by State Road, the Delaware Expressway, I-95, and Ashburner Street. And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Section 14905 entitled Non-Accessory Signs by adding a new subsection to permit one advertising sign with certain conditions within the area bounded by State Road, the Delaware Expressway, I-95, and Ashburner Street.
Thank you. Those five bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a non-privileged resolution expressing Council support for an amendment to the Pennsylvania Constitution that will authorize the General Assembly to establish reasonable classes of real property for the purpose of taxation.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one resolution cosponsored by Alan Dom, Mark Squilla, Mr. Greenley, Councilman Greenley, Councilman Tollenberger, Johnson, Jim Bass, Green, Blackwell, and Johnson. And we'll note that all of us are wearing Villanova blue today, including you who never wears a blue shirt.
You're absolutely right. I'm really struggling out here without my white shirt. and the 2800 block of Headley Street from Richmond Street to Bass Street with certain exceptions. And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate buffered bicycle lanes in each direction on Tyson Avenue from Roosevelt Boulevard to Frankfurt Avenue. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by State Road, the Delaware Expressway, I-95, and Ashburner Street. And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Section 14905 entitled Non-Accessory Signs by adding a new subsection to permit one advertising sign with certain conditions within the area bounded by State Road, the Delaware Expressway, I-95, and Ashburner Street.
Thank you. Those five bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a non-privileged resolution expressing council support for an amendment to the Pennsylvania Constitution that will authorize the General Assembly to establish reasonable classes of real property for the purpose of taxation.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one resolution cosponsored by Alan Dom, Mark Squilla, Mr. Greenlee, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Tollenberger, Johnson, Jim Bass, Green, Blackwell, and Johnson. And we'll note that all of us are wearing Villanova blue today, including you who never wears a blue shirt.
You're absolutely right. I'm really struggling out here without my white shirt on. Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Jay Wright and the Villanova University men's basketball team on winning the 2016 NCAA Men's National Basketball Championship on a last-second buzzer-beater three-pointer to defeat the University of North Carolina 77 to 74.
And that'll be on today's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution also naming the 2700 block of Wharton Street Kevin H. Hannah Way to honor the memory of Kevin Hannah and to recognize his life and memorialize his lasting legacy.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Actually, it'll be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sane.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Indiana Avenue, Palethorpe Street, Cambry Street, and Second Street.
That bill will be referred to committee. Councilman Jones, please.
Councilman Heenan was also on that, and irrespective of his alma mater, said he made an exception this one day.
That's all right. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution cosponsored by Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings to consider the possibility of offering pension buyouts to city employees.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution cosponsored by Councilwoman Gim and one bill, and I would like to be recognized on the bill.
Certainly, Councilwoman. Thank you.
An ordinance amending Section 171305 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Compensation Required to be Paid to Employees to revise the compensation and benefits required to be provided in connection with the application of the Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage Standard.
Councilwoman, I'll recognize you now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, for the record, I just wanted to note that this bill adds one phrase to the 21st Century Minimum Wage Ordinance, and it states that "provided that the minimum wage shall not be less than the previous year's minimum wage." And just for the record and a little background, during the previous administration, an executive order changed the terms of the living wage to include a consumer price index adjustment and a $12 floor. However, the executive order had only applied to the first tier of subcontractors, and our Councilman Wilson Good Jr. then authored legislation to extend the living wage to all tiers of subcontractors. Now, what was interesting is that during a hearing on that legislation, there was a witness who was questioned and asked very specifically if the living wage could ever go down if the CPI went down, and that witness emphatically answered no. Well, this January, we found out that that witness was wrong, and the answer to the question was actually yes, and the wage went down to $11.94 due to a drop in the CPI. And this legislation, Mr. President, will simply ensure that the minimum wage will never go down, even if the CPI goes down. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Great for checking that oversight. That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling upon the United States Senate to approve HR 2209, recently approved on February 1, 2016 by the House of Representatives, to require the appropriate federal banking agencies to treat certain municipal obligations as Level 2A liquid assets by amending the rule entitled Liquidity Coverage Ratio, Liquidity Risk Measurement Standards, Final Rule.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar. Councilwoman Brown. Councilwoman Brown, did you want to be recognized? Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gim.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution proclaiming and designating the week of April 10 through 16, 2016, as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week to encourage citizens to assist crime victims and to increase community awareness and support for the organizations that help crime victims rebuild their lives.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Tottenberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one privileged resolution responsible by all Councilmembers, and when the vote comes up by district, stay at the side of the vote and honor the call.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the installation of all-way stop signs at the intersection of Norcom Road and Nature Road.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution in solemn recognition of the week of May 1 through May 8, 2016, as the annual remembrance of the 6 million Jewish martyrs who perished during the Holocaust.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, in the honor of champions this week, I'm also doing resolutions for three state champions in my district, so happy to do that. One's cosponsored by Al Tannberger and Kenyatta Johnson, so we keep the city of champions alive. And also another non-privileged resolution for encouraging PayPal to consider Philadelphia as a location for their corporations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Roman Catholic High School basketball team, the Cahalites, on winning the 2016 Philadelphia Catholic League Championship.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Saints John Newman and Maria Guretti High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team for winning the PIA District 12 AA City Championship.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution congratulating the Saints John Newman and Maria Guretti Saints 2015-16 Boys Basketball Team on winning the PIA Division AAA State Championship.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution welcoming and encouraging PayPal and other businesses that support lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual to relocate to Philadelphia, a city which has always been the forefront of nondiscrimination based on gender identity.
And that'll be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer new bills or resolutions this week.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President, and I offer three privileged resolutions cosponsored by Councilmembers Squilla, Tottenberger, Green, Reynolds, Brown, Bass, Gim, and I will mention that I understand that one of the cosponsors, Councilman Derek Green, would like to be heard on the privileged resolution regarding the Tuskegee Airmen. I have a confused look, so I'll withdraw that statement given to me by my staff. All right. I strike that. All right.
It's okay.
A privileged resolution congratulating the Philadelphia City Planning Commission for being awarded the American Planning Association's 2016 National Planning Excellence Award for a planning agency.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution congratulating, recognizing and honoring Philadelphia 76ers legend Allen Iverson for his induction into the Basketball Hall of Fame.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Greater Philadelphia Chapter of Tuskegee Airmen for the 75th anniversary of the activation of the Tuskegee Airmen Squadron.
And that'll be on this week's final passes calendar. Thank you very much, and that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and the next order of business is report to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez for a report from the Committee on License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspection reports two bills out of committee with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. And Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Licenses and Inspections, to which is referred Bill Number 160013, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 10100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Animals by providing requirements relating to the retail sale of certain animals. And Bill Number 160202, entitled and ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, Chapter 3, general requirements, to require inspections of certain bridges, to impose reporting, remediation, and other requirements in connection therewith. Respectful reports that is considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
And the Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading today of the bills Number 160013, 160202.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160013 and 160202. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a report from the Committee of Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs, to which is referred Bill Number 160113, entitled and ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire certain land in the 30th Ward of the city of Philadelphia located along the Schuylkill River between South Street and Christian Street, known as 624 rear Schuylkill Avenue. Respectful reports that is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 160113.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160113. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that bill will be on our first reading calendar today. Next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee have been deemed to have had a first reading. They will be on our second and final passes of council in our next session, and there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Council President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers 160157, 160252, 160253, 160254, 160261, 160262, 160018-A with an amendment, 160097, 160112, 160145, 160146, 160147, 160148, and 160169. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Our next order of business will be our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution, and I say specifically the bill or resolution, not a philosophical issue, if you have not already signed up, I would ask that you do so at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of council chambers. There's a device on that podium. It has a light. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we would ask that you please adhere to the guidelines. Those remarks will be three minutes. Decker, please call the first name.
Roxanne Crawley. Commenting on 160261.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth Sultan. I'm a staff member at Philadelphia VIP stepping in for Roxanne Crawley, who had to attend a hearing. Philadelphia VIP is the hub of pro bono legal services in Philadelphia. We connect low-income clients with volunteer attorneys who provide legal services to them in a variety of civil cases on a pro bono basis. VIP assists a large number of clients who are facing tangled title issues. That means they're individuals living in homes in which they have a legal interest but do not have their names on the deed to those homes. These issues often arise when the record owner is a deceased relative of our client whose estate has never been probated. These issues can also come up in lease-purchase agreements gone awry or in cases of fraudulent conveyances. I'd like to say thank you to Councilwoman Bass for introducing Resolution 160261, directing creation of a real estate tax foreclosure diversion program. VIP works with approximately 500 new and existing tangled title cases annually. Slightly more than half of our tangled title clients are facing delinquent real estate tax issues. Many of them are in tax foreclosure. These are clients who would be able to save their homes with the help of the Real Estate Tax Foreclosure Conciliation Program. We are grateful for the recognition of equitable owners in many tax relief programs. However, many of our clients who are equitable owners of their homes but do not have their names on the deed are unaware or minimally aware of the real estate tax relief programs available to them. Many clients believe they aren't eligible because they're not yet the record owner of the property. They may not realize that once they're in an owner-occupied payment agreement, the tax foreclosure is stayed and that their payments under the agreement will be affordable for them because they are income-based. The Conciliation and Diversion Program for Real Estate Tax Foreclosure would give homeowners a face-to-face opportunity to receive essential guidance and counseling that they need to prevent the loss of their homes. VIP was an early partner in the residential mortgage foreclosure diversion program. This is an excellent model on which to base the real estate tax diversion program. We know it works. We've seen it work for our mortgage foreclosure clients, and it will work for clients facing real estate tax foreclosure as well. The diversion program created by Resolution 160261 will assist countless Philadelphians struggling to prevent the loss of their homes and will preserve the vitality of our communities by minimizing the number of foreclosed and vacant properties. Thank you on behalf of VIP clients, our staff, and our volunteer attorneys.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, please just repeat your name for the record.
Elizabeth Sultan.
Thank you.
Monti Wilson. Commenting on 160261.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman. Standing in front of microphones is one of my favorite things. My name is Monti Wilson. I'm a senior attorney with Community Legal Services in Philadelphia. I'm here today to testify in support of Resolution 160261 proposing to create a real estate tax diversion program similar to the mortgage foreclosure diversion program that Philadelphia is already nationally known for. I have been representing homeowners facing mortgage and tax foreclosure actions against them to take their homes for years. In the last years since 2010, we've seen a sharp spike in the increase of the number of tax foreclosures filed on people's homes involving delinquent taxes. In 2010, the average number of filings involving residential properties in common courts for delinquent taxes was 30 a month. This year, that number has varied between 200 a month to some estimates go as high as 600 a month. We understand that the city needs this money in order to fund the school district and city services, but at the same time, every step needs to be taken to help homeowners preserve their homes while they pay the city. Last year, we had over 390 people come to Community Legal Services seeking help with tax foreclosures that they were facing. Many of them we were able to help. This year, we've already seen over 100 people, and we expect to see 300 to 400 more just this year. A tax conciliation program would help those homeowners preserve those homes, and I believe we can do this while getting the city paid. Secondly, it's not always cost-effective to foreclose and take a home. As many of you are aware, the low-income homes in poor neighborhoods are often not in very good condition, and putting those homes up for sale in order to pay property taxes often leads to no sale or a sale that leads to the property not in fact paying off the full amount of the tax rate. Third, and I think most importantly, there is a lack of current due process. Due process is what protects homeowners. Currently, there was no process. Currently, there is minimal process for homeowners once they are in the judicial system. Before October, there was no hearing before a court if you were facing a foreclosure on your property. Currently, the current process, you go down to Common Pleas Court, and you meet with opposing counsel. However, there is no independent over. However, there is no independent oversight by the court, no judge necessarily in the room, and no record of the proceedings. Many homeowners approach us every time we're down there representing individuals, asking us, can you tell me if I'll see a judge? Can you help me? Obviously, we can't represent them on the fly. Setting up a diversion program would help those homeowners. We also believe it would save the city money by settling many of these cases and avoiding the cost of foreclosure and litigation. Finally, it would increase due process. I urge you therefore to pass Resolution...
Thank you.
The Resolution 160261. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Elizabeth Shea. Commenting on 160261.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Elizabeth Shea. I work at the Senior Law Center where I run a homeowners assistance program. And why are seniors in the bullseye of real estate tax foreclosures? It's simple. Seventy-two percent of people 60 and older in Philadelphia own their homes. Thirty percent of our homeowners are seniors. And PCA, Philadelphia Corporation for Aging, conducted a survey last year. Thirty-nine percent of senior homeowners said they have trouble paying their real estate taxes. So there's 14,000 tangled titles. We don't know the number of those occupied by seniors, but we believe it's the majority of them. To get into payment plans to save their houses, they have to put in an application and have somebody show the city that they have a right to those houses, that they're an heir, that there's a reason why they should be protected. Two people came into Senior Law Center last week with sheriff sales of homes they had lived in, who were entitled to owner-occupied payment agreements but had been denied them and been told they needed to pay a down payment before their applications could be reviewed. These people were on the road to losing their houses, and we stopped that. We put in an application, and I wrote letters for each of them saying why they're entitled to this relief, and they will get it, and the sheriff's sales have been stayed. Those are just the two seniors that got to Senior Law Center. Yes, many get to CLS, but many get nowhere, and these houses will go to sheriff's sale without legal resources to combat it. We conducted outreach in the senior communities and senior centers, and we do a property tax checkup for every senior that calls Senior Law Center to make sure they're getting the property tax relief they're entitled to. But services need to be put into place like the mortgage foreclosure diversion program where Senior Law Center goes every Thursday and conducts legal triage. We need that, and the real estate tax foreclosure matters as well. So, thank you. That's it. And so, yes, I am in support of Resolution 160261. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Joe Danahell. Commenting on 160252 and 160256.
Mr. Danahell, can you do me a favor this week? And thank you for coming again. Can you reference at a minimum this bill that is actually on the calendar and not talk about your philosophical concerns about the Redevelopment Authority? Because you're supposed to talk about the actual bill.
Well, I am talking about the actual bill, but also there's philosophical concerns about...
No, the bill is on the calendar, not just...
The bill is on the calendar, and I'm going to address that.
Okay, thank you.
But your refusal to address the Redevelopment Authority or to hear any contradictory, even though the council constantly hands property over to the Redevelopment Authority...
Can you do me a favor? Can you mention the bill so that at least you're like in the ballpark?
Counsel is a representative of the people's will. Counsel is required to hold state agencies accountable for procedures that damage sovereign people. If we, the people, have to solve problems ourselves, why did we hire all you agents and agencies designed solely to serve the people and conduct our business? Can a fireman refuse to fight a fire? Duty says no. You agents and agencies are bound by oath to obey and defend the Constitution laws. Resolving that the sheriff's department answers how due process was not followed before de-transfers occurred is a start. The RDA should be next. The very person that was supposedly working for me to get paid by the RDA signed the deed transferring it, knowing I wasn't paying. So therefore, two agencies were in violation. C-section 42 USC 1982, 1983, 1985, and 1986. The next step for this esteemed body is to make the DA accountable to why no investigation of any of these violations the sheriff's department has incurred after numerous alleged deed issues and no due process or charges ever filed. The funding the RDA is next. This council's job will be much easier if the agents and agencies designed solely to serve the people would do their job constitutionally. You wouldn't have me standing here week after week. It is a legislative body duty to ask for answers or, like in Flint, Michigan, government stalls and the people suffer. Government has no rights, just fiduciary duties. Never forget that the people support your efforts to do the people's work and act constitutionally, which keeps litigation costs to a minimum so that other programs can be funded. Paul Robeson has quoted, "The answer to injustice is not to silence the critic, but to end the injustice." We can all do better. Now let this get to work.
Thank you. Councilman Heenan.
I'm sorry, the last speaker, Mr. Danahell, I was just trying to get on the record what bill he was referencing on the final calendar today. If he could come back.
160256 and 160261.
Well, thank you very much. Council President had asked from the beginning, and for the record and the stenographer, we just want to make sure that that goes into record. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilman.
Sheila Lloyd. Commenting on 160256.
Yes, good morning, Council.
Good morning.
I'm in agreement, and I'm in favor. My name is Sheila Lloyd, and I'm in favor of 160256 and 160261. You know, a mistake does not become a mistake unless it's not corrected. And here, you know, and asking for a moratorium is really important because... Can y'all hear me?
If you speak, get back into the mic.
Yeah, can you hear me?
There you go. Thank you.
All right. I'm in favor of 160256 and 160261 for this moratorium because, you know, last week y'all were talking about murder and the violence in the city of Philadelphia. Well, when people are put out of their homes because of misconduct, that's causing and committing murders because you're breaking up families. And for us not to receive a due process or because you have authority and you sit high, you know, like the pastor said today, too much is given, much is required. And when we don't answer a subpoena, we be punished. We be locked up if we don't produce the evidence. But when we ask the law firms or these banks to answer the subpoenas, and they don't have to answer, is one thing good for one person and not good for another? You know, so I'm asking city council to pass this bill because you got people who have been in their homes for years. It's been in hurry. And for the misconduct to continue to go on and create a demise of homelessness, where is the brother to the God in the city of Philadelphia? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony.
Crystal Stokens. Commenting on 160256.
Good morning, Council. My name is Crystal Stevens with a P H, and I'm here to comment on Resolution 160256 and Resolution 160261. In 2008, we all know that something went very wrong in the mortgage industry, and as a result, the banks got bought out, they got bailed out, they got sold out. But where did that leave homeowners? They got put out. Philadelphia attempted to come to the rescue of homeowners that were victims of this crisis by developing the Mortgage Foreclosure Diversion Program, which was a model for the entire country. Recently, that program was revised so that it may have better operations and improve its results. Those improvements did not involve homeowners, yet there are homeowners that fell through the cracks of that program, and these homeowners need remedy. They are talking about Resolution 160261, which is going to model after the first resolution or the first mortgage foreclosure diversion program. So I'm asking council to approve these two resolutions because these homeowners, especially the ones that fell through the cracks, need remedy. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Johnny Young. Commenting on 160256.
Morning. Good morning, Council. I'm going to speak on 160256 and 160261. I don't want to repeat a lot of the things that people just ended up saying, but I think this moratorium is important for a little larger reason than just saving a home. We have a fundamental problem with our judicial system here. Our judicial system is not following protocol. They're not allowing due process, and then constitutionally, we have a problem where land disputes are not supposed to be held in this court. So if there's a issue with a bank and, let's say, a private citizen like myself, and we ask for validation, verification, standing, and jurisdiction, it appears, from all of the research that we've done, all of these judges are not allowing or not forcing the law firms to bring evidence in court, and that's fundamentally wrong. All land disputes, once more, is supposed to be held in Superior Court. So every time a foreclosure is done in this court, we are in the wrong jurisdiction. Now, I'm going to hazard a guess and say that over 95% of the cases that we've researched have all been denied when you're requesting standing, when you're requesting jurisdiction, when you're requesting validation, and verification. And as Crystal just said, if all the big banks have all got bailed out, how in the hell can we come back in 2015, 14, and 16, and these banks are claiming to own something they don't own the property? The land dispute is for the land, not the property, and Superior Court only can hear cases involving land dispute. So over the last eight or nine years, we have been allowing the courts to process and adjudicate property and land that they have no business doing. So before this becomes a federal lawsuit, we have to stop this process on our own in this house. So city council, I urge you to enforce that moratorium so that we can correct the ills and the wrongs because property, again, under land disputes cannot be heard in this court.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Bernadette Peoples. Commenting on 160256.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Bernadette Peoples. I'm coming to you to talk to you about when the due process of having acquired title, due process is not being allowed to us as citizens of Philadelphia, and I'm asking you to please, to please, whenever you're doing work and you talk about murder, you're murdering us. We're dying. Saving families of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Jane Nyland. Commenting on 160261.
Hello, my name is Jane Nyland. I'm an attorney at Philadelphia Legal Assistance, and I'm here to testify in support of Resolution 160261. Philadelphia Legal Assistance operates the Save Your Home Philly Hotline, which serves as the central point of contact for Philadelphians facing foreclosure. The hotline provides advice, brief services, and referrals for thousands of Philadelphians facing foreclosure each year. Over the past few years, we've seen a marked increase in calls from Philadelphians facing tax foreclosures. Our hotline sees them in all stages of the litigation process. When they're referred to the attorneys at Philadelphia Legal Assistance, they're usually late in the stages of the litigation process, either with a tax sale scheduled or post-tax sale. These are individuals who would benefit and are eligible for existing tax payment programs. But because of a lack of understanding of available options, a lack of understanding of the process, and no representation, they haven't applied for the existing programs, and they've lost their homes. We're seeing Philadelphians lose their only assets, their homes, for often very small amounts of tax delinquency. Again, these are their only assets. Again, we represent low-income senior citizens, and again, a diversion program early in the litigation process would offer these individuals the chance to apply for existing city tax programs and save their homes. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment, and we will now move into our calendar. Mr. Decker, could you please read the title of 160157?
A resolution expressing council support for an amendment to the Pennsylvania Constitution that would authorize different real estate tax rates in cities and school districts of the first class for residential property, commercial property, and such other classes of property that the city may establish, and conveying council's opposition to a provision that would mandate a reduction in other business or wage taxes as a condition of implementing different real estate tax rates for different classes of property.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for motion.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of city council, I vote that the resolution, bill number 160157, be withdrawn.
Second. Thank you for moving properly second, the resolution number 160157 be withdrawn. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? The record shall reflect, 160157 has been withdrawn from our calendar. Mr. Decker, 160252.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of the portion of the model cities urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1248, 1301 through Row 3, 1316 through 1318, 1901 through 1903, 1905, 1917, 1919, 1921, and 1929 through 35 Ridge Avenue, including 1909 through 13 West Thompson Street, 1300 North 19th Street, 1306 through 1310 North 19th Street, and 1939 through 1949 Ridge Avenue.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And Resolution 160252 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160253.
A resolution calling on the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to oppose House Bill 1800 of the 2015-16 session currently before the Committee on Labor and Industry, which amends the Workers' Compensation Act and creates unnecessary changes to a successful system.
And the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption of resolution.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? Resolution 160253 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160254.
A resolution appointing councilmember Derek S. Green to the Philadelphia Gas Commission.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Move for the adoption of resolution.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? 160254 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160261.
A resolution calling on the First Judicial District to develop a conciliation process in coordination with the Philadelphia Department of Revenue similar to the Residential Mortgage Foreclosure Diversion Program to address the rising level of residential tax delinquency cases and to address the problems with the current system so as to prevent the unnecessary sale of owner-occupied homes.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it? Resolution 160261 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160262.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds, conveying additional fees, simple title, and certain sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and... and permits there on, situated in the fifty-ninth ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Aye.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and Resolution 160262 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 160018A.
And ordinance amending Chapter nine, eight hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant Rent Control by requiring that tenants of certain multifamily buildings be provided with a written disclosure of the building policy on smoking in individual dwelling units.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill Number 160018-A be amended. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council.
Second.
Thank you. The amendment to 160018A has been moved in property second. All those in favor to said amendment?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. 160018A has been amended and will be on our second and final reading passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 160097.
And ordinance amending Section nine two thirteen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by adding a permissible location.
Thank you. This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, aye, ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in in favor of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160112.
And ordinance authorizing Dr. Jack Carroll from McGee Rehabilitation Hospital to construct or maintain a liquid oxygen tank and the construction of an associated masonry enclosure at fifteen thirteen Ray Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in in favor of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160145.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number forty-four by placing on the city plan Thirty-seventh Street from Market Street to Philbert Street and from Philbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from Thirty-seventh Street to Thirty-eighth Street north of Philbert Street, and Warren Street from Thirty-seventh Street to Thirty-eighth Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in in favor of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160146.
And ordinance authorizing the paving of Thirty-seventh Street from Market Street to Philbert Street and from Philbert Street to Warren Street, Cuthbert Street from Thirty-seventh Street to Thirty-eighth Street and Warren Street from Thirty-seventh Street to Thirty-eighth Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in in favor of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160147.
And ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Pine Street and Forty-Fifth Street, Melvin, Melvin Street and Locust Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in in favor of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160148.
And ordinance authorizing Rachel Miller of Best Partners to install, own and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at forty-three oh one Baltimore Avenue.
This bill has also been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in in favor of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160169.
And ordinance legalizing an existing six-foot wooden fence at eight forty-one through forty-three North Hopple Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilwoman Gim, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O, Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes of seventeen and ayes of zero. Majority of members present voting in in favor of the bill passes. Mr. Decker, have any additional resolutions?
A resolution proclaiming April two thousand sixteen as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Legislative Oversight Committee to conduct public hearings to examine the executive branch's enforcement of Bill Number one zero 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 one one A Lead Paint Disclosure, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating J. Wright and the Villanova University Men's Basketball Team on winning the two thousand sixteen NCAA Men's National Basketball Championship on a last-second buzzer-beater three-pointer to defeat the University of North Carolina seventy-seven to seventy-four, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I move for its adoption.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Labor and Civil Service to hold hearings to consider the possibility of offering pension buyouts to, to city employees, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution proclaiming and designating the week of April ten through sixteen two thousand sixteen as Philadelphia Crime Victims Rights Week to encourage citizens to assist crime victims and to increase community awareness and support for the organizations that help crime victims rebuild their lives, introduced by Councilwoman Gim.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution in solemn recognition of the week of May one through May eight two thousand sixteen as the annual remembrance of the six million Jewish martyrs who perished during the Holocaust.
Standing vote. Uh, we will vote by standing vote. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill. The resolution passes and shall be adopted.
A resolution honoring and congratulating Roman Catholic High School Basketball Team, the Cahalites, on winning the two thousand sixteen Philadelphia Catholic League Champions Championship, the P.I.A.A. Quadruple A State Championship and the District Twelve City Title for the Quadruple A Classification, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, and also co-sponsored by Councilman Tamberger. Uh, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Saints John Newman and Maria Gueretti High School Girls' Varsity Basketball Team for winning the P.I.A.A. District Twelve Double A City Championship and the P.I.A.A. Double A State Championship Game while finishing the season twenty-nine and one, and with a national ranking of number seven by ESPN, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating the Saints John Newman and Maria Gueretti Saints two thousand fifteen sixteen Boys Basketball Team on winning the P.I.A.A. Division Triple A State Championship, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and that's also co-sponsored by Councilman Johnson. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating the Philadelphia City Planning Commission for being awarded the American Planning Association's two thousand sixteen National Planning Excellence Award for a Planning Agency, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating, recognizing and honoring Philadelphia Seventy-Sixers legend Allen Iverson for his induction into the Basketball Hall of Fame, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Greater Philadelphia Chapter of Tuskegee Airmen for the seventy-fifth anniversary of the activation of the Tuskegee Airmen Squadron, introduced by Councilman O. Introduced by Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, uh, any speeches on the part of the minority? Hmm, okay. Any speeches on the part of the majority? And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief, but as someone who completely enjoys music and, um, with, as I stated earlier, jazz being my first favorite and rhythm and blues being my dance favorite, it bears repeating that the work that Councilman O has done around lifting and putting Philadelphia back on the map and in many ways reclaiming its, uh, its presence and position in the music industry is, cannot, uh, be saluted enough. So I wanted to once again salute and say thank you to Councilman O and to let him know that I'm taking a page out of his book and actually meeting with, uh, the Department of WREC to figure out how we can do the same in saluting all genres of dance. I congratulate you, Councilman O. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I enjoy, um, introducing resolutions along with my colleagues about Villanova's success, we, we embark upon some serious, even critical work here in these chambers. Two, two sites. One, sometimes like time-lapse photography, we don't see the seeds we planted and then the fruit we've grown. I'd like to report about the fruit we have grown. Uh, it, with, uh, Councilman Johnson's guidance along with the Transportation Committee, we embarked upon looking at the CTT riders, the people that take our mothers and our fathers to, back and forth to hospitals and doctor's appointments. And we realized at that time that they were operating in subpar conditions, they weren't properly trained, and most as important, underpaid, many of them receiving minimum wage. Based on some of the work that our colleagues have done in, in prior years, Wilson Good in particular, I am pleased to report, um, that as of Monday, they will be at twelve-thirty an hour, which is, which is, for them, huge. Three hundred families just received a stimulus package because of the work that our colleagues have done in these chambers. The second aspect is something that you heard from, uh, today, and I want to salute, uh, Councilwoman Bass for keeping the idea of share-of-sale moratoriums alive. We strategically did not pass the moratorium this week, giving progress a chance to work. We're working with the administration to look at some of the seven recommendations that came out of the hearings that were conducted with my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Blackwell and the Chair, uh, as Chair of the Housing Committee, and looking at some of the concerns that were raised by the individual members here today. We've made progress on three of the seven recommendations this council put forth, but there are two timetables that I want to put on the record. There's one timetable to fix a system that needs some tweaking, that has good intentions, but also needs to be modernized because those people who want to defraud that system have found ways that we need to close those loopholes. The second is the individual timetable of the twelve or more people who have a different sense of urgency. There's a different sense of urgency when every day you live with the specter of being kicked out of your home. And so each week they come down and they, come down and they do what is proper by way of the democratic process, but keep in mind, when they go home, there's, there's nothing like that insecurity that comes to know whether your primary asset, your home, is in jeopardy. So as we move, as we move along to fix the system, um, I want to thank CLS for looking at many of their individual cases so that that clock, that spectrum, that sword of Damocles doesn't impact them directly and those who are advocating for so many others. So I wanted to thank my colleagues for keeping the moving, uh, keeping the needle moving in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise only to say thank you to you and Councilwoman Sanchez for that important water rate hearing we had prior to council today. It's very important. I hope everyone will take seriously all the issues that are involved in that request. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, um, follow up also on, uh, Councilman Jones's comments regarding mortgage foreclosures and tax foreclosures in the City of Philadelphia, and to thank him for, uh, his leadership on this issue, which is really, I, I think has brought us a long way. Uh, Resolution Number one six zero two six one, which is going to address tax foreclosures, I think is going to take us even further, and there is no reason that we should not have a process in place to deal with tax delinquencies, uh, rather than going straight to the foreclosure process. So this is going to go a long way, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for their support. I also wanted to just take a, a, a brief moment and recognize a young lady who is interning and shadowing me for the day, Ms. Niasha McAllister, who is a seventh grader at the John Story Jinks School in, uh, northwest Philadelphia, if she could just stand briefly. And earlier, you know, when Councilman Jones first started his comments, he talked about planting a seed, and you never know where the, that seed, uh, how it will grow and what will happen, and I did want to acknowledge that Ms. McAllister's mother, uh, moons ago, was an intern in Councilman Jones's office.
Wow, awesome.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good story. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, first, I want to thank my colleagues for your support, uh, in reference to my appointment to the Gas Commission, so I just want to put on the record, thank you for your support. Um, two, you all should have seen, um, pins on your desk in reference to autism awareness. Hopefully you can wear those pins with pride as we, you know, celebrate Autism Awareness Month this, this April. As well as finally, this Saturday, uh, we will be having a open house, working with my office and Jayden's voice, um, run by Terry Matthews. She's opening her West Philadelphia office this Saturday from twelve to three. Her new office location is fifty-five forty-eight Chestnut Street. So for those who are in this chamber or who can hear my voice, uh, if you're able to attend, please come out and learn information about, um, autism awareness services, um, that Ms. Matthews and her capable staff provide to people throughout the City of Philadelphia, and thank you for your support. your support.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly for a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, before I make a motion to adjourn this session, I would like to take a moment to do something a bit unorthodox and invite a very special young person inside the rails. Ms. Umaya McDowell is a fifth-grade student at the Eleanor C. Emlyn School in Mount Airy. She is here because she won the Big Brother Big Sisters Little Counsel President for the Day essay contest. So watch out, Mr. President. And she's here to inspire and remind us what we are really here for. Umaya is here today with her very proud mother, Tanisha Huggins, and her big sister, Andrea Rimuno. Umaya was asked to write a one-page essay on what she would like to do if she was in charge of the City of Philadelphia for one day. I think we'd all like to do that. And here's what she had to say. Umaya?
I was... If I could be a leader in Philadelphia City Government for a day, I would help the schools get more funding goods. Schools have playgrounds instead of just concrete and a basketball court. My school has concrete. I don't like it because a lot of people get injured on it, which is why we need a school nurse. I would have nurses stay for the whole day, and we need counselors in schools. We should have more teachers for classrooms because there's a lot of kids in one classroom, and you can't focus because there's too many kids. The school needs to get paid more. More people would come to the school if it looks better, and parents would not have to come as far to get their kids to school. I would help the community and make people stop hanging out on the streets. I would help homeless people in Philadelphia. I would write a law that would be about abandoned houses. I would like to be a leader in city government because these are real problems in the community, and I would want to help people.
Thank you, Umaya. Mr. President, for those who don't know, Big Brothers Big Sisters matches adults with young people looking for mentors and role models. Umaya was matched, and her big sister Andrea Rimuno are just one of literally thousands of these matches in Philadelphia and the surrounding counties. In addition to inviting Umaya up to this council president's podium to bang this ceremonial gavel, again, on behalf of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, I wanted to invite everyone present across the hall to council caucus room for a catered lunch courtesy of Big Brothers Big Sisters immediately after we adjourn. And whether your interest is becoming a big or simply wanting to learn more about this critically important mentorship organization, I strongly encourage you to attend. And with that, Mr. President, I move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, April 14, 2016, at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
It has been moved in properly, second. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, April 14, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Eyes have it. Council will be adjourned.
You got it. All right.[1755.11]